He stands for Pledge Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rachel Teleski, Gladys Cooper, Rich Jannelli, Pat Johnson here, Brett Karat. He's here.
He's here, but...
I'm gonna check if he is here. Kathy Bolero, that's out. Manuela Ramirez.
Here.
Farley Santos.
Here.
Amy Spalino.
Here.
And welcome Ralph and Professor.
Thank you guys, President.
Congratulations. Recognizations. Sterling Miller, 2019 Connecticut Technology and Engineering Education Association High School Teacher of the Year.
Back here again for another great award. I'm here to present for your recognition to Sterling Miller. Since 2007 Sterling has always been commended for his tremendous job he has done in the classroom. What even makes him more interesting is that he has done it while teaching a variety of courses, from the old woodworking courses to today's video production classes. He is also personally responsible for bringing AP Computer Science Principles to Danbury High School. Aside from his work in classroom work, Sterling wears many hats at the HHS. He produces videos of school events, is the director of the Video Production Club, which always allows us to see things as athletics, movements in music, even these wonderful Board of Education meetings are all done by Sterling and his group. Sterling's Hatter TV channel had over 172,000 views last year and is growing every year. It just had over 1,000 hits this week, all of which were on Dr. Sal's community conversations. Not true, not true.
They're totally comedians, that'll work.
Under Sterling's guidance, all these productions allow our students a hands-on experience working in the field of technology. Sterling also spent three years as department head at the CT Business Department and has written and received over $100,000 in grants to provide students with current technologies and has written countless iterations of curriculum. Out of school, he is presented at teacher technology conferences across the state and in New England. Also in 2018, he was invited as a Certified Google Innovator at the Googles offices in London, where he presented to other educators from across the world about emerging educational technology. And, he's not busy enough, in his free time, he just published an interactive book for kids called Treasures Protectors Incorporated. It's a STEM fiction novel that's an interactive book using QR codes to drive the investigations. To quote Dr. Sal from our latest version of the Danbury Digest, "Sterling is very well-liked by his colleagues and students alike. With his approachable demeanor and outstanding professional attitude, he fosters the kind of growth that helps us prepare students for both college and careers after high school." On a personal note, Sterling has four beautiful kids who attend Danbury Public Schools and a wonderful wife named Wendy. Please join me in a round of applause for the Connecticut Technology.
Did you ever take a pair of gloves?
Thank you.
Wife and kids here?
What's that?
Wife and kids here?
Um, two of my kids are here.
Your brother?
Yeah.
Sterling, do you have something you want to say?
You wanna say anything?
I just wanna thank you the board for being so supportive of all the programs, all the things that we do, because we couldn't put out all the videos we do. We couldn't do AP Computer Science without the support of the district and the board and the high school. And so, just thank you all for all the support and helping us help students succeed and excel. So, thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you.
One second. There's something you and Dana are working on.
Yes.
Want to mention?
Uh, we're just trying to increase our publicity tenfold and get more publicity for Danbury Public Schools and more, more video of our students and our opportunities here.
And it's gonna be on a what?
For the program?
Uh, through the Hatters TV, is that?
Talking about the library looking from Greenwich?
Yes. So, we're gonna start doing a local live where we have cameras mounted places where we can stream a lot more events going on. So, instead of just streaming select sports, we can stream all of our sports. We can stream a lot more events from the auditorium. So, we're trying to get the good things that Danbury Schools is doing live out there so that everybody can have access to it. And so, we can promote our students and help their successes be shared with everybody. So, so we're works on that too.
Thank you so much. Let me get back to that production room. Try and take some more weight off of me, alright? Public participation, Board welcomes public participation. And ask that speakers please limit their comments to three minutes. Speakers may offer objective comments of school operations and programs that concern them. And our first person is Joe Mariano.
Hello. Uh, thank you for giving your role to speak. Before I begin, if I could just say, um, I've lived in Danbury my whole life. I had a first grader in St. Louis special needs and we could've moved away from Danbury two years ago, we stayed here on Perkins because of the special needs program. And I just wanted to thank the staff at the Ruff, this student special needs program in public and say how proud we are of what they've been able to accomplish that. That being said, I just wanna take a moment. In my everyday life, I'm a research analyst for technology. And as I was going through this calendar this year for the school calendar, I noticed a lot of professional development dates. And one thing that research analysts do is they get bored very easily and we start looking for other things to research. So, in my free time, I started looking at what other large school districts in Connecticut look like from a professional development standpoint. I put together a report, I'll be sharing with you, I'm emailing to the board as well. You'll notice that I blacked out the sixth bullet because you actually updated that. But I wanted to give you some highlights of this report. The point of this report is to provide some factual data. To start off, for 2018 part of the, for the 2018 part of the school year, Danbury has three weeks and five full days of school. No early dismissals, no days off. Of the top nine, of the top nine of the large CT school districts, by student population, averaged 8.1 full weeks of school in 2018. More than half of what Danbury will have completed by the end of this year. By the week of February 5th, Danbury has reached its fifth full five days of school in a row. And adding in the prior week, it's the first time Danbury School District has had back-to-back full five days in the school year. Five to six months since the school year began. By March, the total full five-day school weeks for Danbury School Year at this point is seven, still under the combined out of the top nine other schools 2018 full weeks. By the end of the school year, Danbury will have 10 full weeks of school, assuming we don't get snow. In the 2018-2019 calendar, the average for the other nine large population schools in CT is 20.8 weeks of full weeks of school. Double the amount of Danbury. Board members, there's a stark contrast here, what like school districts in CT are doing. This does beg the question, why do we have so much more than others? This inconsistency with the amount of PVDs coupled with holiday closures and other reasons for early dismissals creates a difficult environment, not just for parents, but for educators and the students as well. Parents are forced to take leave to get their kids off the bus early or find other means. It's hard for teachers to start and stop the education process over and over again. And on a personal note, as a father with special needs child, that inconsistency can be very damaging. On a personal note, it was very difficult just getting them on the bus for yet after Veterans Day yesterday and just trying to get them home and regulate it by the end of the day yesterday afternoon. Try not to take up too much of your valuable time. I pose these six questions that hopefully can discuss at a later date and I welcome open dialogue. One, why are there 15 PVD days, matter-of-factly? Why are there 18 for the 2019-2020 schedule, three from this current year? Does the board have any data that shows the impact of these PVDs? And if so, can we see what that data looks like if it's available? Does the board, excuse me, what makes Danbury unique to have double the amount of PVDs versus similarly type-sized schools? Will the board reconsider the current 18 PVDs for the 2019-2020 schedule to fall online what seems to be the average for the large CT school districts? Will the board reconsider the idea of forming a board educator parent group to find a better method of administering PVDs? Thank you for your time, Pat. Thanks, Danny.
Lee Viviano?
Hi, I'm a teacher, a special ed teacher at Pembroke School, but I'm also the fundraising chairperson for the Pembroke Playground. Thank you Board of Members, Dr. Sal, Danbury Public School staff, for letting me speak briefly to update you on the progress of the Pembroke Playground. It is taking a community's effort to make the strides we have done to date. With the help of Mr. Jannelli and Dr. Sal, we were able to meet with Mayor Bowden and receive a commitment to have the city of Danbury use their labor and machines for the site prep necessary for the installation of a new playground. This includes fixing drainage issues, leveling the ground, and removing the old playground equipment. This will save us approximately $30,000. Local businesses such as Hat City Tattoo, Papadons of Danbury, Max Spirits are supporting this cause as well. In particular, Hat City Tattoo held a fundraising event raising $9,267 in one day. This was truly remarkable. Today, the FFW Post 149 in Danbury presented me with three checks totaling $450. Other schools in our district have also offered assistance with this project. Danbury High School is making two large signs featuring fundraising thermometers to be posted around town. The athletic department has also allowed our volunteers to collect donations at the entrances for our home football games all season long. King Street Intermediate has a student leadership group called Community Cares, which is collecting cans and bottles for recycling money. To date, they have raised $83. At Broadview Middle School, Dr. Thomas helped give us some more fundraising ideas. She's very good at finding the money. Pembroke students and staff are collecting tabs off cans as well as the deposits of cans and bottles to raise money. The students are also selling yellow rubber bracelets for a dollar. Pembroke family and friends continue to make donations via PayPal on the fundraising website, which is www.thepembrokeplayground.com. Foresters Financial will help us plan a golf outing and a second family event to help fundraise this coming spring. They are also helping us push through a $15,000 grant with Kaboom that was written by the amazing Anne Mead in the house. It was almost, it's almost a done deal, so stay tuned for that. We are in preliminary talks with a local business to add a walking pad on the Pembroke property so that this project appeals to people of all ages in our community and helps support the funding of this project. While I wish I could say this was my idea, I have to admit this fantastic idea was given to us by Dr. Sal. Lastly, we have friends up in Hartford, State Representatives David R. Consey and Michael Ferguson. They have jointly agreed to support a government bond for $175,000 in hopes it will land on the agenda in December. Please know this is a hail mary effort to get money out of the current administration before the new administration takes over. This is bipartisanship at its best. We are especially proud since they are both alumni of the Danbury Public Schools. Although we have only raised $19,450, we will continue to work hard fundraising until the total amount of money is collected. Then, all of you will be invited to the ribbon cutting ceremonies. In closing, I invite any Board of Education member interested in using their talents or connections to help with this community effort. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Anybody who wanted to speak that didn't have their name on the list? Anybody? Hey, thank you. Uh, the Board of Education approves the items the Consent Calendar exhibits 18-129 through 18-131 as recommended. Seconded by Mrs. Cooper. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? One abstention. Motion carries. Employee representative, spotlight your school, Broadview Middle School. Where did Mr. Downey go? Sal, can you get the plate there?
Sir.
Thank you.
Good evening to the Board of Council members of the Danbury Public Schools. Our names are Amanda Kriegen, eighth grade.
Jessica DePalma, eighth grade.
Zach Catalana, seventh grade.
And Holly McGuire, seventh grade.
Ms. Thomas thought we would do a better job highlighting the great things that happen at our school. So, here is Life at Broadview. This is the Broadview mission statement. We recite this each morning after the Pledge of Legion. At assembly, Ms. Thomas has us recite it and then scream "Yeah!" at the end. So, please read this with me and don't forget to say "yeah." Broadview pride is having respect for people, property, and others and always doing the best we can. Yeah! Team Assembly is about student recognition. It is held once a month for each grade level. We celebrate academic success, most improved, student of the month, random acts of kindness, and anything happening in our lives that we would like to share. Last year, we learned about growth mindset. This year, we are learning about school connectedness. We have great teachers who care about us and what we are learning. We are challenged every day to do the best and our teachers model this for us. I have favorite teachers, but Ms. Thomas told me not to tell you. Our administrators, Mrs. Finnegas and Mrs. Rhodes are fair and along with Ms. Thomas, they ensure that everyone in school is safe and learning. The curriculum is challenging. We are continuing with the Expeditionary Learning Program at ELA. Also, we have a new curriculum for math. It is pretty cool. In addition, we continue to learn new standards in science with an emphasis on inquiry-based learning. One of our fun projects is the Humanities Project-Based Learning Night, PBO. It is a fun way to present what we are learning in social studies. Exciting things happen at Broadview. We have Ms. Meyer, who is the Danbury Public Schools Teacher of the Year. Math team placed first in regional competitions, beating Brookfield, Newtown, and Ridgefield. We hosted a parent informational night for our Spanish and Portuguese-speaking families to review technology used by the school. We had a breakfast celebration to honor veterans on November 9th. We are sponsoring two blood drives to help Danbury Hospital. This year, our musical theater production is The Lion King Jr. Here's a little sample.
Stop spending, we just got some singing.
We'll do better than that. But I just happened to happen to fund this, so let me do this first.
We hope you'll join us. Now we will share our best memories at Broadview. My favorite memory at Broadview would be my theater production in sixth grade because I got to meet a lot of new friends. My favorite memory was when I went to the Philadelphia trip in seventh grade because I made a lot of friends. My favorite memory is the first-ever team assembly we had in sixth grade. I liked it because it was nice to see how everyone supports each other. My favorite memory at Broadview would be meeting PBO all night in sixth grade last year. It was truly a creative way to express what we've been learning in our history classes.
Am I direct?
Are you gonna sing?
Yeah, I want that. Hey, my name is Toddie George. I'm currently a school counselor at Broadview Middle School. I'm working on 092 and Dr. Thomas, I had the privilege of shadowing Dr. Thomas and she thought it would be a good idea for me to come and present with the Broadview program. First thing I'd like to acknowledge is the beautiful artwork that's been here, put out by the Broadview students. To that Drakeberg and...
And thanks, Ms. Free.
Yeah. Ms. Drakeberg and Ms. Ramos, they do such an amazing job every year. All the summer. Anyhow, so the goals for Broadview this year, Dr. Thomas is crazy about that. So, we use that to drive a lot of the things that we do. We're constantly reviewing that in our staff ratings, our PLCs. Another cool thing that we're doing this year is implementing vertical teaming. It's to help with the transition of students from grade to grade. So, the idea is to have student, teachers go down and meet with the students that they're gonna receive in the upcoming school year to get them, to get to know them first of all and also get them acquainted with the extracurriculars and stuff like that. So, I think that's pretty cool. That's gonna be happening this year. We're also utilizing the team enrichment periods as advisory occasionally to roll out some of our character ed programs and refine something new that we're doing this year. The Safe Stop, you can start with a low, or also some programs that would be to have brought you. And all of that ties in with the school connectedness goal that we have this year. So, it's really about improving school connectedness among the students and the parents and the staff. And for that, oh, sorry. We've got some parent workshops that Dr. Thomas was able to get funding for by the United Way. Two of them are gonna be transition programs, so incoming middle schoolers from fifth to sixth grade and then transitioning students from eighth to ninth grade going to high school. She also attended a social media training that we wanted to bring in for the parents as well. A lot of information that we want parents to be aware of with the social media and things like that. And we also have a mindfulness parenting program already planned on January 29th. And that's, again, to help with the student development and success at Broadview Middle School. So, we've got some cool things going on at Broadview this year. I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We would like to extend a special invitation. You are cordially invited to attend and experience the many wonderful things happening at Broadview. Respectfully submitted, staff, students, and parents of Broadview Middle School. Thank you for allowing us to share and have a good evening.
Just real quick, I did wanna acknowledge that Mrs. Finnegas, our assistant principal, is here with us tonight too. Thank you. And one of our teachers, Mrs. Kennedy, came out. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next up, we have Andy. Summer learning.
Good evening. Dr. Sal had asked me a while ago to work on summer learning classes in the district. So, last year in October, we brought together all of the summer learning providers. We invited 40, we had 39 attendants, which was wonderful, to talk about what they need. If they had more space where their programs were held during the summer, could they expand it? What could we do as a system to make sure that more of our students had a summer learning experience? We know that the time from the, when they end school in June and start again in September, we often see what we call summer learning slot. And so, we wanted to be able to stop that. So, the group convened in October. They convened again in December and worked with our curriculum coordinators. The idea was to align some of the curriculum, but we also realized at the same time, aligning curriculum was unrealistic because of all the grades and the ages and the cost of what it would be to do that. So, instead, we talked big ideas. What are children missing in foundational knowledge and in opportunity that the summer programs could give them? From that, the group decided to put together a directory of summer programs and to highlight those summer programs in March to hold a spring resource fair or summer resource fair. We held the first one in March. We had over 600 families come to it. Huge success. Everybody comes saying, gee, we didn't know this happened another year. And we're like, no, this is the first year. So, I wanted to give you some feedback about the programs, what we did, and what it looks like. This is the first year that we've really been able to collect data. So, we will continue to collect this data over the next few years. We want to increase the amount of students that we're actually collecting data on. So, this is really our first baseline data. So, the 42 programs offered summer programming data this past summer. All used the summer feeding program and so 21,340 breakfasts were served and 25,979 lunches were served throughout greater Danbury, throughout Danbury, through all the programs. So, the group that we chose to really examine was our summer sensational program that was at Great Plain, two of our Century 21 programs, and one of our community providers that provided care for the summer. What we did with our, with all of our summer learning this year, and I know Dr. Sal has addressed it, we grouped them into three buildings. So, this was a new context for all of us. They were at Park Avenue, Ellsworth, I'm missing, and King Street. So, the Ellsworth program and 21st Century have, or Park Avenue and Ellsworth have 21st Century programming for the summer. So, for the students that were there during the day, we were able to wrap the day. So, they would end that program at 11:30, have lunch, and then they would continue on with this till 5:30 at night. So, what we wanted to do when we compared... So what we wanted to do when we compared the three programs is we wanted children to have similar duration, which is the amount of weeks they went during the summer, as well as duration of time during the day. So we looked at four hundred and eleven Danbury Public School students in those three different programs. All of the programs except one went for six weeks. We took out any outliers. When we first examined the data, we analyzed the data, we realized that there were a couple of outliers on both sides. And so we made phone calls to the program managers, what happened with this child? We found out maybe the child only attended one week. So we excluded any of our outliers. For the testing, we used the Stars literacy and maths scores. The first set that we used was the baseline for May, from May two thousand and eighteen. And then we looked at the students again for the September two thousand and eighteen and how those compared. So in reading scores, I'm happy to say that fifty-five percent of those four hundred and eleven children increased their scores over summer, thirty percent maintained within five points, and fifteen percent dropped. Not bad. Maths scores, sixty-five percent of the students increased, eighteen maintained within five points, and seventeen percent decreased. So our next steps are going to be evaluate the differences in the programs. Why in one program did the scores drop less than other programs? We want to look at what supports we're giving the programs. Our one community program was using some older materials. We were able to furnish them at no cost to the district or to the program, more supplies, more things to increase the rigor of their curriculum. We also want to meet with our summer providers again in January. We'll update the directory, we'll invite any new folks in, and we'll host this year a February resource fair. School registrations for summer start in January. It's hard to believe that we'll be looking at next summer already. So that's the nutshell, in a quick nutshell, of our summer programs so far. We'll expand the number that we look at next summer. We spent some time building some trust with programs and getting them to feel that they're part of the community and looking at what their role is and seeing the value of their role in their programs to work with all of our children in Danbury. Questions? Sorry, how was the public notified of this particular program and what age group or grades participated? So we looked at children in second, third, fourth, and fifth grade. How were the programs chosen for, to be analyzed? Or how did families know about all the programs? Some families know about the program. So a lot of programs have really wonderful reputations in the community and families come back to them every year. Also, the resource fair was an opportunity for new families to come out to visit all of the programs that we have, that we have offering in Danbury. And so that was held at the Dome. Many of you, I think, came out to it that day, very well attended. So parents got to walk around, and for some of them, they kind of cower all their programs together because they need that whole eight-week of care for their children as well as we want to have them learning. Thank you.
Learning Board goals was a collaboration with community groups and extending the year. I commend Andy George, he was a young man at first, to bring about the synergy to bring everybody on the one roof. And the Dome permitted that to happen. I think it's really, the summer slide is an issue and a challenge for us that we've been looking at. In fact, considering the timing of summer school, in terms of where we actually offer summer school. So the work is, it's needed, needs to be reinforced, I think, if you're leadership.
We'll just keep going with it this summer, create more numbers.
Action items.
Would the Board of Education accept for first reading the seclusion restraint exclusionary timeout policy new in accordance with eighteen dash one thirty-two?
Secured by Mr. Santos, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Proposed? Abstain? Motion carries.
Let the Board of Education accept for first reading the student records confidentiality policy replaces current policy in its entirety in accordance with eighteen dash one thirty-three.
Secured by Mr. Santos, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Proposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Superintendent's report.
With the new elections, I think we need to take an opportunity to figure out we can have legislative breakfast beginning in the next six. So we work with a community outreach program with Janelle to set that up. Janelle, if you want. But I think that would be smart for us to do it. There's a few items, one that we talked about tonight in terms of the data collection contract and some other items that I think we should start working on. So if that's okay, we'll set that up. I kind of need to know, wouldn't you like to have it? If we could do it before morning or breakfast? I need some direction. Normally I do a breakfast, I need some help. If the legislators like it first thing in the morning, then I go, that's for them. It's kind of tough to do it at night. That's why we call it legislative breakfast. So we can do it right here. So we'll work on something with that. I put in a cause editorial, co-chairman of cause, we're trying to get the attention of the new legislators and the governor, the need about the ergens in terms of sustainability of programs. Most of us rely heavily on the Alliance money. If the Alliance money walks away from us, we're going to have some major, major issues. So this was an attempt to get someone's attention. It has not been published yet, so I haven't gotten anybody's attention. But we keep trying, and hopefully someone will pick it up and, someone will pick it up, someone will pick it up. They'll pick it up and get it in there. Because I think we need to advocate for our youngsters, I know you all do, and we need to keep that trumpet, you know, out there for our kids. We're in line for some resources, Joe keeps reminding me, the Alliance money has not been approved yet. Right? So we're hoping that it's not only approved, but it's increased. As you see, if you count, look at the Alliance District, there's five hundred thousand students in the state. The Alliance thirty, thirty school systems have almost half of those students in our schools. So the need is clearly there, and there's a way of trying to get people's attention. So I put this in there for you. I, we have, the elevators of the high school, Joe, you can speak to that and also help the modules, please.
Sure. As the Board knows, we had some issues with the elevators of the high school on inspection. The elevators C and D were shut down. So we had, the city was in, and the C elevator was fixed promptly. We had folks in action over the weekend on Veterans Day to fix D. There was an additional part we still need for D to fix. There's a cutoff relay that's got to replace, that is, or should I say, has to be upgraded. So that will be, I hope towards the end of this week, if not probably next week, the city, Antonio and Sean at the city are well aware and on top of the situation. I think we can voice out and everyone else up there, right or happy.
Is that, just out of curiosity, is that a standard? I know that elevators are inspected on a regular basis.
Was it three years? A three-year inspection?
Okay. And do we have those done, like, this time of the year? Or maybe could we have them done, like, pre-summer so that if there's a defect that we could get it done?
It's all when the state shows up. I mean, it was just part of the state inspection.
Oh, okay.
We called anything inspected we didn't like, and that was why that prompted our concern, so.
Gotcha, okay.
Would the nurse be thrown somewhere?
Yeah, I mean, they just literally show up at random, so it's not really...
Yeah, I didn't know, yeah, you scheduled something.
Yeah, it could be three and a half years, it could, they could come out. It's all, that's just trying to come up.
Gotcha.
Portables, we actually had our punchless meeting today at the architects. We've had some challenges with some of the fire code issues, the state fire marshal's been involved at length up there. The original design of the portals has changed some because there was originally no exterior doors out of each classroom. And as the board remembers, we then had to add an exterior door or sprinkle a whole building. So obviously, the fire marshal was okay with one exterior door. Then there's a question of the egress path, which originally went through quarters around the building. Now they went all the way around the building, so we've had some additional modifications. So we've got a couple of change orders, sizable nature. But again, we do think right now floor waxing is happening right, actually in the next couple of days. So I do think we're very close to occupying. I would say probably give or take December first, give or take furniture is on its way. So we're definitely close. They are, they are done.
Yeah, just about the high school, do you guys tell, I guess, are kids still okay in the media center? Are we, is the space issue there?
Yeah, Dan is used, they do have access to, I believe, I don't want to probably mess up the floors in D, but obviously, I believe it's D two and D three are the challenges the students get into. They did make modification in the media center right now. I know Dr. Shaw emailed back with her parents. As soon as we get them online, we will. Kids are okay, but I mean, I don't want to prolong it weeks and weeks and weeks. So I was thankful that we got all those elevators, Kansas City electricians were out there Monday, and I was hopeful they could get it cleared, but they are, I'm hopeful wait no week, no more. So as soon as we hear, I'll think for once.
I was just saying, we also did relocate a class or two of students that had more significant mobility issues to accommodate them. It's D four, that's very difficult to get upstairs to. The other floors are, are a little bit, you know, we have to go around that way, but you're able to access them. So there was one or two classes that were moved as a result of that as well.
Budget. Two thousand nineteen point two.
Just an update to the Board, we're just currently sending out the budget request forms to the administrators in the next couple of days. Those are all to all. We are obviously going to be in our track with the budget. We have a chance to send to you folks in January, it's going to be in the mayor's desk before February fifteenth. So as Dr. Sal said, the Alliance and State play a role in this. We're just in the process for early health insurance renewal numbers, I haven't yet, but at least we, our insurance consultants pulled that data already. We'll start looking at that, so early days. I would look at Mr. Janelle down the end, we do need a finance meeting, we'd like to talk about the three-year budget. So at some point, we check challenge, if we could get that, and just on the table to discuss a run-up there for a three-year plan.
Corollary of that, we're doing two things, all right? Silly study.
Silly study, I've been in touch with Friar already, we've got schools identified, they're beginning their work in, I think, December. And McLoan and McBroom actually just emailed me about a while ago, and they're close on the enrollment study data. So I'm hopeful after the next meeting, but they're going to actually do a full presentation to the boards. It might hold it off until January, but that is it as well. That's it.
Strategic plan process? I want to go through, I just want to take a moment here to write these out. We've been, a number of years ago, we had the enhancement plan, which was pretty comprehensive of an action plan which we found is a district that needed improvement, district-wide. And that was produced, and it was a five-year plan. Subsequent from that, we've had the coherence plan, and then we've had multiple-year goals. With the Board setting its goals, there's been some, what are we doing, how are we doing it? Though I really understand what you're doing, Sal. So I think if we create this, I'm not a big proponent of long-range plans, ten years out. I don't know if you could tell what's going on ten years. Five years are more reasonable for a yearly update. So you think putting together a plan with articulated goals and objectives would give me something to put back to you concretely about what we're doing? I feel much more comfortable with that. I think the goals that you've set for us, I will thank you, it's driven the work that we've been doing. Be able to focus on the work because you've had multiple-year goals in line, my goals with your goals and/or my goals with the teacher goals and the administrators, that has really moved us forward. It sounds mundane, but it really is important. The long-range plan is going to provide a different perspective. I think we've sent down a list to you, we're thinking about that on the committee. We have an updated list that we want to share with you. I think you could co-sign the letter with me, that's one of the things I would like to do. And to bring in, we're working with a gentleman that works on with districts. And one of the things that we're looking at is, what do you expect as a Board when you leave here after thirteen years? Given that you started here in kindergarten, some kids are here longer, preschool. What's a portrait of a graduate when they leave here? Start looking at that in a way, and then do back planning from that. So one of the things that Richard has been doing throughout the country and in Connecticut districts is creating a protocol for what a graduate may look like. And it needs to be reflective of the community that we live on, live in, and our kids participate in instruction and ones that are in front of you. So what would our graduate look like? What is a rising, in our case, fifth grade looks like? What does a rising eighth grade look like, eighth grader? And then take those, take those skills and then try to work back into goals, objectives, and resources in a way that's going to move us forward year by year. Then we have a recording structure. And we think by adding an extended group that Kevin's going to talk to you about, will bring to you different perspectives. Ultimately, the Board makes a decision at the end. It'll be presented to you, and then you accept it. You don't accept it, you know, it's your decision to do it. But generally, it's presented to you, accepted, then it becomes the marching orders for the district for the next five years. So I think with that, we bring some clarity about what are you doing, how are you doing, what are we measuring? And that, that might give us that forum. So with that brief explanation, maybe Kevin can share with you some of the things that we're doing.
So I have a handout coming around, there's also a couple available for the public on the table. See, I've got some more to give you now. Just a couple of quick slides. We previously had shared this presentation with our admin to overview what the process typically look like. Process is going to call upon us to engage multiple stakeholders throughout the district and school community. So we want to make sure, if acceptable, we will post this to our district website to send out all the communities and where, what our next steps are. So in the process, we will have three, there'll be three phases of this process to try to get us to a point by the end of the school year, I hope, is that we will have a document that can further speak to what Dr. Phil was talking about, and we will have a document to help drive district and school. We are seeing phase one take place during November through January. In that process, we will have a broad stakeholder group inviting up to forty participants that include people civic, community-based leaders, district leaders, teachers, students, board members. And Dr. Sal had mentioned this earlier, this process will be facilitated by Richard Levens. The expectation will be that we will look at kind of where we are in the district right now. So we'll be looking at our enhancement plan, our utilization studies, any core reports that have been done previously in the district for the participants to get an idea of where we are now in the district. From that information, the expectation is in a day-long session, the participants will come up with a draft of a revised mission statement and the basic, and the basic, the initial components of the characteristics of a portrait of a graduate. Typically, it takes at least a day, which is going to be a nice long day for the participants. And we're grateful for the people who have yet to accept their invitations because they haven't gone out. But in advance, we are thankful for their participation. Phase two, we have an advisory group to the Board called TDEP. TDEP will be invited in along with extended members from the school community. That group will be expected, that group will be looking at the revised mission statement and characteristics of a portrait of a graduate. In that meeting, we will facilitate that group in-house. In that meeting, the TDEP group currently has one board member sitting on it. We will expand that invitation to two board members and ensure that we have representation from our school community in all of the various departments. The outcome from that day will be look at the revised mission statement and characteristics of a portrait of a graduate, develop a theory of action that's going to help drive the strategic plan, and come up with kind of the pillars of the plan that's going to operationalize the mission. Right, so typically, a plan would have something that speaks to academics, something that speaks to operations and facilities, something that speaks to talent and professional development, et cetera, et cetera. So we will be asking that group to develop those kind of big buckets if we want. The next group, and this is the group that we probably expect to have considerably involvement in the process. At this point, we will need to really buckle down and get our teachers, our administrators, principals, assistant principals, supervisors, et cetera, to begin to, given the direction provided by the board of stakeholder group, given the direction provided by TDEC and advisory group to the board. We will use that information to drive the objectives, the goals, the key people who are going to be responsible for the, the indicators for success. Those things will be further drilled, spelled out in the plan. And our hope is, this is somewhat ambitious, but our hope is that we can pass it by the end of the school year, or review by the board.
Mr. Genelli.
Kevin, you know, we put it to the board, left you handed out, and hopefully participants.
Sure.
Suggest an invite, please, in December. The list to me seems top-heavy with educators, but why don't you consider more business community? In Danbury, we have the hospital, which is the largest employer. We have publicly held companies such as Cracks Air, I think Intel, a public health company, Cardis, I'm not sure if it's public health, but, and these are large companies that employ a good part of the workers in Danbury. Would you think it wise to get, and I see you have union sales, so they would fit into a business community, but from a financial point of view, banking is a little bit different service. Would you think it worth it to get the opinions of these companies since they're the ones that were shaping the future for, for our students to go out there? I've heard in the past, some of the companies feel that the education system doesn't build a type of, I don't see character, but doesn't offer the credentials that, that the business community looks for. Maybe it's a general statement, but I think to have a representation of employees in the community participate in this, so we can get their feel on this. And I just wondered whether it could be considered, or if it is considered and rejected, is perhaps why.
So, no surprise to the group that I have due. And so in trying to identify all, all of the stakeholders who should be at the table, it's kind of hard to not include everyone.
Sure.
But to your point, we will revisit. And so one of the reasons why I just shared this evening is to make sure we did not miss anyone. So frankly, I see this as an opportunity to make sure we have all of the right people at the table.
Again, this is only meant as a constructive observation, so that we get, you know, a cross-representation. You know, you're, as I said, you're top-heavy on educators, and you have different, you know, representation of different groups of people, which I think are important, but again, my background is essentially business. I tend to think that their voice in terms of the education process should be the, but particularly, I think, you know, I'm speaking, it's my own public, it's my own personal opinion, is that Danbury Hospital is such a large employer that we as boards on different things we do, excluding Dr. Mead because she has exceptional relationships with the business community. You know, I tend to think we need to make an effort on the board to get closer to the hospital, to see what they can offer us and help us with, or what we could do, so that how students can benefit with this. So again, it's only meant as constructive comment. I know you're new to the district, and it's just an observation on my part.
Well, you can't take all the blame for that. I'm not new. So, you know, I mean, I was a part of that constructive, very trying.
He's still, he's still letting Kevin take the trying take.
We, yeah, sometimes we're myopic in what we're looking at, so that's why we brought it here to expand it. And we put the Chamber, you know, trying to TDEC.
TDEC, yeah.
And could help us identify folks that were actually part of something and committed. So that's some, it's a good comment, so thank you.
Ms. Paul Mars.
I'm actually going to echo Dr. Sal's comment. I think that by engaging PJ from T from Chamber, that in a way, you will get that kind of feedback. PJ has been doing a lot of good work in specifically targeting those employers in our community and getting feedback from them on what they feel that he needs to do as an advocate for all businesses. And I think the educational component has been a current theme that he's been marrying. So I think just having PJ engaged, but with a caveat that you really expected to go back to his membership and get some feedback, I think is actually the most streamlined way of doing it. A lot of these larger corporations have different volunteer structures. So it's going to be very complicated to find the right person that's like the key person in that company to come that day. So I think that just by inviting the Chamber representative, but with a caveat, really asking PJ to get involved and give feedback, I think you've got all of your basic knowledge. Yeah, the only other comment I'll make is just about the distinction between the Brazilian club aspect, or, you know, there is no Brazilian association or social club. There is a Brazilian community center that is under the purview of the Catholic diocese in the building. And then you have the Association of Brazilian Pastors. But when it comes to the Brazilian community, unfortunately, there is no identifiable leader that's not strictly connected to religion per se.
Okay.
So you may want to just identify folks who are not necessarily tied in with religious communities to also give you a different perspective.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else up here? Okay, thank you.
Can I go?
Mrs. Cooper.
I, I want to ask a question. When this big group meet, one of the things that we will be doing will be looking at the current board mission statement, am I correct?
Yes.
I have another part to that, but unfortunately, I'm not ready to get into that type of discussion right then. But, there's certain things that I believe that the board should be doing as a board. And I remember the board sitting down with the superintendent at that particular time, and on a Saturday morning, after about five or six hours discussing how they felt about this mission statement that we currently have. So I guess that's sort of where I'm coming from and looking at this, as well as putting it into a whole group of people that has been identified, that has made our mission statement a little bit more comfortable. So let me sort of think of this a little bit more. I add or take from it, I'll add another thing. That was just one of the questions that I really wanted to ask the group. Manu folks is going to be coming up with the new mission statement and looking at the current goals that we have and developing goals that's going to be looking at a five-year plan.
Correct. And Mrs. Cooper, I just wanted to add one more thing.
Can I, I can't hear you.
No, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Do a better job talking to the mic.
Thank you.
I believe Dr. Sal has plans to, my understanding is there's a planned meeting with you and Kate again. I forget what month that is. And I believe there's a plan to engage the board in an activity to revisit the mission statement as, as a group.
We sent, Bob, right, sent materials that, for that evening, things that we've been on, so that everybody get their eye on what it is that we're looking at, like before we get everybody again.
Thank you.
I should have included that in phase one, which is part of the reason why it says November to January, because I believe that invitation calls upon you guys to come in within that timeframe.
I'm not going to try and make you hard, I'm just.
I didn't feel that way. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mrs. Cooper. Okay, Board Chairperson's report. Annual Board of Education meeting, December fifteenth, uh, sorry, December fifth. At 5:30 PM at the West Side Middle School Media Center. Also, I just wanted to thank Hatters TV and as Sal was referring to Zach Murdock and back from the New Times for helping get the word out for us on some of the things that we need to get out to the public. And that we do appreciate your being here and helping us bring forth the word out to the public, and we appreciate it. Thank you. Any board members have any communications or comments? Mr. Genelli, Ms. Paul Mars.
Like I'm working over time to connect here. I think it was the last meeting or the one before, one of the board members that indicated that us as board members will visit the PTO schools that we selected, come back and, and give a little brief report to what's happening. So with that said, the Tuesday night, the school that I had visited was Danbury, and a couple of points to bring out. One was mentioned, topics discussed at the meeting board was mentioned related to the fundraising efforts. And I want to add to that, that particular project right now is only done by a couple of people. Lee Viviano, and he's spearheading this, which is a tremendous job. But if we can have more volunteers, if anybody in the board wants to get their hands on, obviously, to participate in this, if they have any, you know, say expertise in terms of fundraising, and they complete, you know, we can use a lot of what we can get. The other, I think that was mentioned, Dr. Apple mentioned that her attendance, they had a hundred and twenty-five students, getting perfect attendance from, I think it was August beginning of the year through, through the end of October. So that's a hundred and twenty-five students, that made three fifty, which is a great record. And then she was saying that she was, because of the success of the Lexi program, I think it is.
Lexi.
Lexi, that she's had, I believe in the third grade, that they were going to test with kindergarten children, and it was another school, I believe was Little Ridge, that was going to do that, to test kindergarten kids, plus the program was successful. So that was some of the information relative to what happened at the PTO meeting. The other thought I had, passed off by Dr. Sal, we're here, apart from our primary responsibilities, so what we do for, is for the kids, children, and the education in Danbury. However, I mentioned to Dr. Sal, I'd like to see participation of these students at our meetings. I had some thoughts on it, and he corrected me in terms of logistics, that it may not work. But I'd like to throw out the idea to you, but I'd like Dr. Sal to you, to give you what he thinks how it may work. And if you think it's plausible or possible, think about it, maybe you can have some involvement from some of our high school students to participate in some of our meetings and give us their thoughts on some of the subjects.
I just mentioned, it's that, over time, depending on the personalities of the youngsters, how people, how they get, you know. And if we're serious about having them participate other than our report and then leaving, is that there's something on the agenda, the calendar, for example. Everybody's talking about the calendar. Well, how's it impact them, you know, the schedule, how's it, these are high school kids that are generally leaders in the building. And if there's items on the agenda, you may ask them to stay for that time, and maybe I can move it up, so the kids don't have to stay so late. Instead of just expanding the number of kids, and I don't think that'll get anywhere, but we have our youngsters who are used to coming. They kind of know the personalities here, probably comfortable and kind of talking to us. And that might be a way of getting their perspective on some of this. As, as I mentioned, we did, we've put youngsters on the long-range planning committee for that voice, student voice. But that might be one way that we can entertain their, their thinking on some of the things that we do.
You know, as a case in point, we had some positive feedback when Dan was introducing that flex time and the block scheduling. So it was good to hear. I think Sal had indicated to the students, or prompted a question to the students, about what their feeling was and how it was working. So that to us as board members, it is important to see that certain decisions that we were, we were making in the best interest of what we felt was their best interest, to see how ultimately they felt about it, and see how ultimately it worked. And so I think it could be interesting and certainly rewarding to us to have a different perspective on this. It is, again, we work here as a group, and, you know, somebody who said no idea is a bad idea. If we get collective opinions on it, I think it'd be good. Thank you, Ms. Paul Mars.
I also just wanted to report back that I was able to participate in the third annual Innovation of Technology Night that this Antonis mentioned at Bradford Middle School for Hispanic and Portuguese-speaking families. And there are about a hundred and fifty parents in attendance. It was very well-attended. I was able to share a little bit of my story, since I went to Bradford Middle School when I was young. And that's a good book, and I learned how to speak English, and was able to connect with a lot of the parents for ALLL parents, and speak to parent involvement, and helping with homework, and just being involved in your child's education. And it was a really interesting experience to hear their feedback and to see how eager they were to learn about using the technology, how they felt that they, that that night very much needed, and just really saw the opportunity for us to think about a way to suggest that to be implemented in all of our schools. Because it was a very good networking, working, gathering, community-building activity. There was a purpose, I felt that most of them felt there was a purpose of them being there other than just meeting people, and other than just meeting the teachers and other families, and they were able to really kind of go into the system and feel more comfortable using that. So I thought it was very positive. And also just want to thank Dr. Sal and Kelly for getting back to me on the issue that was raised to me by our constituent regarding a photo to a local dog place, you know, shelter that was having some issues with animal cruelty, and unfortunately, some of our students were there visiting. And I just want to really give you a shout-out and appreciation how quickly guys got back to me and were able to find information to talk the issue. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'm just going to piggyback on what Mr. Genelli was talking about as far as reporting from the PTOs that we're assigned to. Last year I was assigned to Shelter Rock. They meet once a quarter, so we met recently. It was a double benefit for me because my daughter is now kindergarten at Shelter Rock, much to the, I think, trepidation of Ms. Masial with the principal there. She, she actually was very honest and said, you know, I'm very nervous in fact that this is my first year, and your daughter's kindergarten here, and you're on the board, and.
Got to keep her eye on it.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Yeah. Badge and everything. But she's actually doing some, some very great things there. And the PTO was very appreciative of the new ideas that she's brought to the school. They're going to do some kind of function now in December. Last week I was there for a presentation from Commissioner Sadi on Veterans Day to the fifth graders. And some of the questions that these fifth graders had were just amazing, and he was really impressed with that as well. In October, before Halloween, she did a trunk-or-treat. So she asked for volunteers from her teachers on daytime after school, and most of the teachers participated. They parked their car in a certain place and decorated it, and over three hundred and fifty, I think it was the number, of parents and students attended. The PTO had popcorn, hot chocolate, all of it, you know, they were able to fundraise a bit. But it was a, it was a great community event where they were able to, the parents were able to come together. The interesting thing is that you got to meet other parents through your children, you know, daddy, this is just me. So it really was a great event. The PTO there is very happy with the principal. They, one of the main things that they brought up to me was that they've had three principals in a very short time span. And so they're all hoping that Ms. Masial stays.
Yeah, she says, I'm not going anywhere.
I'm not going anywhere. You know, I, I love this school so far, and so they're doing a great job there. The PTO is just, is even more active now. So just wanted to report back on that, that's some of the stuff that we're getting out there. The proponents of bettering the school system, at least at Shelter Rock, and they're doing everything they can. A core group of volunteers are doing everything they can to expand services and try to be there for the students. Thank you, Mr. Sal.
Oh, go ahead. Which one do I want to go? In October, I was the Danbury High School PTO meeting, and it was a pleasant surprise because the one I went to last year, there were like five people or six people that came. But this year, there were nineteen people who attended, and they chose new officers. People stepped up, it was great. I mean, they have new president, vice president, treasurer, and I think that the, the. And I think that the former officers were like relieved because they thought no one was going to step up and, you know, carry the PTO on. So that was really, I thought, encouraging. I know Rachel was there that night too. And I did hear they're, they're really concerned about the rug entrance to the gym, I guess. Remember that conversation? Very, I think it's down where all the athletes come in.
The gym entrance.
Gym entrance, right. And there's some bathroom doors that don't close. I don't know exactly where those were. Do you remember?
No, I only know that they were at girls' restrooms. And I did bring that up in the facility meeting that we had a couple weeks ago.
But anyway, I thought it was really encouraging. It was just a group, it seemed like people were parent parents. They kind of took over and became, you know, so that was great.
Here's a pen for the staff.
We're using tomorrow's leaders.
Sweet. Sweet.
So that was great and a really encouraging to be there at that meeting and hear all the people that were interested. And then the other thing was I attended and so did Rachel. You want to talk about that?
Sure, yeah. That's on my list. I have lots of things to tell. So last week, sorry, we haven't met in a while, Rob, so. Amy and I attended a Veterans Day celebration at AIS at BDM with the flag ceremony by the girl and boy scout. Family and friends and students who are veterans were invited, recognized and treated to breakfast. The students sang songs, recited poems, wrote letters, gave speeches. And then Dr. Casimiro and Mr. Walton attended, so thank you guys for coming. I thought it was a perfect example of that hybrid day model that we were discussing at our last meeting. And so my question is, can we move forward on a change to the calendar to old school? But I have other things. I also attended groundbreaking ceremony at the Chicago Valley School in Region 12. Right after being at AIS, I went over the river and through the woods to Washington, met with the superintendent, the principal and school board members. They were all excited about a new agro-science lab and building strong coalitions with member towns. Perspective students, which includes our Danbury eighth graders, are invited to attend an informational session tomorrow at 7:00 PM at the Chicago Valley School. Tomorrow, there's also a middle school data night for parents to learn about how student performance is assessed. This is at Rogers Park Middle School at 6:30. I asked Dr. Labanka if board members were invited and he thought that was a good idea. So if anyone's available tomorrow. I also registered for the CADE lobbying 101 on December fir-, uh, December 4th. It's kind of in the middle of the day, 1:00 to 2:30 at the CADE building in Weathersfield. It's free for CADE members. And if anyone would like to come along, I'd be more than happy to drive to Weathersfield. The Schlesky family has been a longtime member of the Danbury Music Center, which puts together a pretty big production of the Nutcracker Ballet with over 200 kids from the greater Danbury area who participate in that. And it's, they dance along to its live orchestra. And tickets are now on sale for shows on December 7th, 8th and 9th, and that's at the high school. It's a really great community tradition that's been around for over 50 years. And then December 10th at 6:30 at the West Side, at Western Connecticut State University, West Side Campus, there is a community screening of the documentary Resilience. And then a forum afterwards, which explains the dangerous biological syndrome caused by stressful experiences during childhood. This is free and open to the public. And I just asked Debbie if she could include a flyer in our next board packet. So that will be in there for your information. And then I just wanted to ask also about the topic that was brought up at last meeting about the Spanish, the AIS kids. I also asked Dr. Labanka about that. And he said, you know, kids were assessed a few years ago and they don't really meet kind of a standard for an advanced Spanish, but it used to be there. So just kind of looking for any information about that.
We followed up with Karen.
Okay.
And that's a long time. And at some point, I think, we began our conversation. That program's been hit with, as bets. The board in its original design had promoted the idea of a new land program, ran out of money, could not do it. And they've limited how many teachers they were able to hire. So that's been part of the issue. And then matching the number of students that entered the middle schools to create a section for them was getting, adding FTEs. And again, that was low incidence. So they're revisiting curriculum now. That was a conversation we had with Karen. And we're not all happy, but I think they're looking at that. So I think you'll start hearing more about curriculum. That is on someone's agenda. But you followed up with Karen, right?
Yeah, I did. And so, you know, just like going back to when AIS first opened, they, there were, sorry, there was, there were teachers that were paid to develop curriculum. It was more of a building base because it was a model that was not district-wide. And so I do think, you know, teacher turnover over the course of the years, it is time to revisit that to make sure that there is vertical articulation of skills so that when students exit, that they are at a certain level that meets our standard. And so I think that was part of the concern was wondering why, you know, after six years of being at AIS, are our students not tested to a certain place? It's a good question. So we are looking into it. And we will look to refresh that curriculum, but do it through district lines instead of a building-based decision-making. And so we kind of have some assurances coming out into sixth grade.
Just wanted to say thank you to the board for allowing me back in. I'm glad to be back. And of course, my update has to do with food. The Ace High School is hosting their annual Thanksgiving meeting. A lot of the events, I know they sent invitations out. But it's Tuesday the 20th, they start serving food from 10:30 to 12:45 roughly. But I've been a couple times. They put it spread out there so I encourage everybody, everybody knows. Yeah, Ace, yeah.
The 20th from what?
Tuesday the 20th, they start serving food about 10:30, 12:45. Get there, it gets pretty busy. At least the last couple of years I've been, gets there. That's it.
Anybody else have anything?
Just a quick announcement.
Sure.
On December night, there will be an open meet and greet reception recognizing our new assistant superintendent, a student. And we invite you all to come. I don't have to mention his name because Mr. Kevin Wilson's sitting up there. It will be from 1:30 to 3:30 PM at New Hope Baptist Church. And also at 10, Dr. Erin DeSandy will walk. I will ask Debbie to make sure at the next meeting we will have the invitations and flyers for everyone. December the night, which is a Sunday afternoon.
Thank you. And the only other thing I had was, let me see. In regards to what Rachel was saying before about Veterans Day, I just was, I was actually listening on the radio. Simsberry apparently does that. And they went over hugely successful. The veterans came in, they did a whole program. So they're having school on Veterans Day.
Many of us do, yeah.
Yeah. So I just happened to hear that, just caught it. And it's kind of great. The other thing, I mean, if you have children of a already age, I went to several colleges with my kids. And we went to West Town's Open House where I saw many Danbury High School students and viewing West Town, which I was pleased to see. Hoping that my kids go there instead of the other school that's three times as much, but... But nonetheless, it was a real, they put on a really nice open house. And if anybody has kids coming up on their junior year, it's a nice program. You go to the West Side campus, they bus you over to the Midtown campus and show you around. And it was, it was well done. So if anybody's interested in that. Outside of that, I guess our next move is to go to executive session. A motion to, seconded by Mr. President Viza, favor. Thank you, everybody.